All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on, actually turned out to be a beautiful evening, June 14th. Will you all rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Roll. Councilman Owen?
Present.
Councilman McGoffin?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilman Allen?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Present.
All right. Thank you. I did not hear from Councilman McGoffin. Did you? Just want to make sure it's...
Yes, he mentioned that he is in Mexico. He's out of town right now, so...
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, he was going to try to make it.
I just want to make sure he's excused. Yeah, I just want to make sure he gets excused.
He said he was trying to make the meeting, so, but yes, I'm sure he'd appreciate that if he can't make the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Consent agenda, items one through six. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Owen, second by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you. Well, tonight we have Cedar Wully's Finest Terror, and this is really going to be a wonderful presentation. And I'm going to call on Chief McElrath to lead us through this.
Zach, go ahead and come on up. But hey, this is just something we do every year to recognize officers for their good work they've done all year. It doesn't mean that we're not missing anybody. I mean, there's lots of good things that are getting done every day in our line of work, and we have a great crew here. So they're all doing great jobs. I wish I could give them all awards, but there's certain criteria that they have to meet to get these awards. So listen in. We got some good things that happened last year that deserve a round of applause, and I'm glad to see everybody here for their families and to recognize them. There you go, Zach. Are you ready to go?
Can I have Officer Seth Bass come up? So on March 19th of 2022, Cedar Wully officers and Skagit County deputies were dispatched to report of a weapons offense in the city of Hamilton. A male subject walked into a residence porch with a gunshot wound to his groin. The victim told the reporting party he'd been shot. Cedar Wully officers responded to assist, and we were the closest law enforcement agency to the incident, and because of the seriousness of the incident, Officer Bass went to assist. Officer Bass was first to arrive and gave lifesaving first aid while trying to gather information on what took place for the other responding units. The victim was later transported by ambulance and then helicopter to receive further treatment. Officer Bass is receiving his second lifesaver award. He also received an award for the delivery of a baby in 2021. Next, I'll have Sergeant Paul Eden and Officer Isaiah Van Dam, who is currently holding his four-hour-old new baby. So Paul will accept both awards. On November 19th, 2022, Cedar Wully officers were dispatched to a welfare check in the city of Cedar Wully. Dispatch was able to use GPS coordinates to locate the call from a cellphone somewhere on North Central, but had no further information on who or where the incident was taking place. The call taker could hear a female on the line crying and the female whisper, "Please save me." Officers were able to determine the correct residence and after reviewing past calls for service. Officers could hear a female crying inside the garage of the residence. The female would not communicate to officers through the man door. Sergeant Eden attempted to communicate with the female through the garage windows. From that location, Sergeant Eden could see the female wrapping Christmas lights around her neck while she was seated in the crawl space above the garage. The female then jumped down. Officer Van Dam forced the man door, and both officers entered the garage. Officer Van Dam grabbed the female while Sergeant Eden broke the Christmas lights free and unwrapped the several layers of lights from around the victim's neck. Cedar Wully Fire Department arrived and assisted with the treatment on scene. The victim was transported for further treatment and evaluation. Because of their actions, a life was saved. Sergeant Eden is receiving his third lifesaver award, and Officer Van Dam would have been receiving his first lifesaver award. Next, I'm going to have Carla come up for her husband, Officer Brian Hall. Officer Brian Hall is currently deployed with the Air Force Reserve, but tonight we are joined by his wife to accept the award for him. On November 25th, 2022, Cedar Wully officers were dispatched to a weapons offense in an apartment on the 200 block of Ball Street. Dispatch advised an intoxicated male in the apartment had stabbed himself in the neck. Cedar Wully officers arrived at the residence and were initially unsure if the wound was self-inflicted or an injury from an assault. Officer Hall found the male lying in a large pool of blood, barely conscious and unable to speak. The bleeding from the neck was still uncontrolled. Officer Hall rendered aid and controlled the bleeding until Cedar Wully Fire arrived on scene. The male was transported away from the scene for further treatment. Because of his actions, Officer Brian Hall saved a life and is therefore receiving his third lifesaver award. Detective Austin Combs, please join us at the front. Bear with me. This is a convoluted and complicated case, so this one's a little longer, so he will have to stand here longer, much to his chagrin. Detective Austin Combs today is receiving the Distinguished Service Award, and on December 19th of 2022, the Skagit County Sheriff's deputies were dispatched to a traffic enforcement incident in the area of Helmut Road. Skagit County deputies were also notified that the description of a suspect vehicle in this incident was consistent with the appearance and license plate of a vehicle that had just been stolen from Sims Road, a short distance east of Cedar Wully. Cedar Wully officers were made aware that Upper Skagit Tribal Police were following the vehicle and had fled from them. Upper Skagit Tribal Police Chief Couch stated that if the vehicle remained on the reservation, he would be requesting agency assistance in the reservation from outside agencies. Cedar Wully officers heard radio traffic that the stolen vehicle had just rammed Upper Skagit Sergeant's vehicle. Upper Skagit Chief Couch requested Cedar Wully PD respond to assist. The stolen vehicle continued recklessly driving around the reservation. Detective Combs was aware that Helmut Road is the only way to get back to SR 20 from the reservation, so there's a good chance the suspect vehicle will come back southbound on Helmut to get away from officers and deputies. Detective Combs laid spike strips southbound on Helmut Road and got to get away... Detective Combs laid spike strips on Helmut Road near Corkdale Road. While Cedar Wully officers responded, the suspect had fled on foot from his first stolen vehicle, taken another vehicle by force from a tribal member, and almost ran over another UTPD officer in the process. The suspect was now eluding officers and deputies in that vehicle. Detective Combs could see the new suspect vehicle coming in his direction. The vehicle's suspect vehicle pulled to a stop, pulled up to the stop sticks, then accelerated over them, and continued south on Helmut Road towards Highway 20. Detective Combs had successfully spiked the two passenger-side tires of the suspect vehicle, and then they started to deflate. Detective Combs and Officer Hall attempted to contact Cedar Wully PD supervisor to authorize Cedar Wully officers to pursue the suspect vehicle. Per Washington State law, even with the several serious crimes involved in this incident, officers must have supervisory approval to pursue the suspect vehicle. Skagit County deputies were told they could not follow the vehicle and not to pursue it in accordance with the same Washington State law. Deputies followed the vehicle eastbound on Highway 20 at a distance. Detective Combs was also falling behind. Detective Combs later explained he intended to follow the suspect and make sure that no collisions occurred or further incidents happened until SWPD supervisor could be contacted to reference pursuit authorization. The suspect vehicle pulled off at Wing Lane and back on SR 20 and began traveling west. Suspect exited his vehicle and attempted to break into a residence in a garage on Wing Lane. Suspect refused to comply with deputies' commands as he ran around the property. When he was unable to make entry, the suspect got back in the stolen vehicle. Deputies being on scene here prevented a home invasion. At that time, numerous uninvolved vehicles were facing westbound on SR 20, which were pulled off to the side of the road. It is believed they were pulled over as a result of the driver's viewing all the police activity. There was a passenger of car among the group of vehicles, and Detective Combs observed the suspect vehicle turn into oncoming lane and come to a stop, driver door to driver door with the uninvolved vehicle. At that time, based on the fact that suspect had already carjacked one vehicle, Upper Skagit Reservation, Detective Combs explained he was extremely concerned that the suspect would attempt to carjack another driver, which could have been extremely, could have had extremely serious ramifications, including kidnapping, injury, or death. Apart from that concern, that the suspect succeeded in carjacking another vehicle, the suspect would now have a vehicle with intact tires, and it was unlikely that law enforcement would have another successful stop-stick deployment. Detective Combs felt it was necessary to activate his emergency lights to initiate another attempt to stop the suspect. Detective Combs activated his lights, the suspect drove away from the innocent motorists and continued driving eastbound on SR 20. At this moment, Detective Combs had prevented an innocent motorist from being the victim of a violent robbery, possibly kidnapping, and most likely serious harm. Detective Combs began following the suspect with the intent of getting permission to perform a PIT maneuver or a pursued immobilization technique maneuver on the suspect, but he concluded that based on the totality of circumstances, including the suspect's ongoing apparent attempts to carjack uninvolved motorists, run into, and flee from police officers, attempt to break into residences, if he did not stop the suspect, it would be a serious danger to the community. Detective Combs is the only Cedar Wully PD's officer certified in PIT. Detective Combs could see the vehicle was surveying erratically between eastbound and westbound lanes of Highway 20 as it continued eastbound. The vehicle was traveling on several deflated tires and had varying speeds of 20 to 35 miles an hour. On Highway 20 east of Coal Creek, Detective Combs, knowing the risk and dangers to himself, but holding that risk, holding the risk to the community as greater, used the PIT maneuver. This caused the suspect vehicle to spin and come to a stop. Deputy Rogers, a former Cedar Wully PD officer, pulled up in front of the vehicle. Suspect vehicle continued forward, striking Deputy Rogers' patrol vehicle. Deputy Rogers was not injured in the collision. Detective Combs used his pushbars of his patrol vehicle to give positive pressure against the suspect vehicle so it could not attempt to flee. The suspect exited the vehicle. Deputies gave the suspect verbal commands. The suspect continued to not cooperate or comply. After a brief standoff, the suspect was taken into custody and transported to Skagit County Jail on several felony charges. This is Detective Combs' second Distinguished Service Award. The Distinguished Service Award is the department's second highest award that can be bestowed on an officer.
A special thanks to our officers. They do every day, put themselves in the line of danger out there, and because of what they're willing to do, and actually, they put us ahead. You think about it, they put us ahead of their families when you think about it, and that's really something that we ought to be honored about and be respectful of. So I thank you again very much for your service to you and all of you, and I think we need to give them another round of applause. Thank you. Okay, and then moving on now to city reports.
Yes.
Charlie, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I will do my best to talk over the room clearing. So just real briefly, there's been some misinformation out in the community regarding the Community Development Director recruitment process. Became aware of this today, and so I just wanted to provide some additional information to the full council in case you didn't see your email, but we posted the position for Community Development Director to the public out on the 28th of April. It was on the city's website. It was also in the Skagit Valley Herald, and it was on social media and has been. Continues to be out there. We're open until filled. We've not filled the position at this time, but I just want to make sure that information was out there so people knew.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to council reports. Councilman Owen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to say, but I just wanted to let everyone know that the blast in the past was a real success, and I've had a lot of reports from some of the restaurant owners that they had a mega day, so I'm looking forward to the fourth and hopefully we'll have the same there. Thank you.
Well stated. Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I'd like to echo that as well. The American Legion did an amazing job with the car show, brought in a ton of people that came through town and had nothing but really good things to say about town. So we'd like to see more of that and some of the positive people coming through. That's what we're here for, is to help bring people into town in events like that, and that was a great success over the, after the last couple of years that we've had. So walking through that was really helpful and encouraging for our town. The other thing I'd like to bring to attention is that I did receive an email, another constituent in regards to State Street and Rita. I know that we discussed that, and we will be putting in some lights. The constituent wasn't aware of that, but I wanted to let everybody know that I did receive that email, and it is being addressed and taken care of there. So just another concerned citizen about the overflow parking that's going from the apartments. So when the Sedron and the library are full, and there are a lot of people there, when there are a lot of people at the apartments, there's overflow parking that happens to take place on the side of E and E lumber, and that with the parking spots and coming out of those corners blocks views, and so that is what that is being referred to. And so the city is moving forward with putting in some pedestrian crossing lights there to help for that, as well as for drivers to be able to see them walking. But just wanted to make everybody aware, I did receive another email in regards to that from a completely different constituent, and that's all.
All right. Thank you. And I do believe that Mr. Freiburger also responded to her, so that was great. So thank you. Yep. All right. Councilman Burns?
Well, blast from the past, and the car show was fantastic, so I want to thank everybody who had involvement in getting that going. That was spectacular. Last night, I got to go to hear about the North Star project and what they're planning on doing. It sounds like it is a good plan, and I'd like to see cities and different community organizations coming together to do something good for the community. A reminder for anyone who's interested in being in the parade, get your applications in through the Log Rodeo. And also, I just found out today, the log drive is going to be brought back after almost 30-year hiatus. The Lions Club's been working on it for about two years, and they just got approval for the gambling permit today. So look for tickets for that, and that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Well, I'm going to talk about the blast from the past, too. It was amazing at the museum. We had a front row seat to it. We had over 100 visitors come through the museum, and I wanted to thank the Legion and Monique at the chamber. They did amazing. And Rick Limley as well for helping with the car show, so it was great.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Allen?
There's nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Good. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did have a committee meeting with Finance and Technology today, and we went through the budget. It is on par for 2023, so that was really good to hear. It hasn't deviated much in either direction. As far as the tech committee, the website, we'll be looking forward to seeing that in September, and it's going to be pretty interactive and pretty engaged. It'll bring some of the things that we utilize most up to the forefront and be able to accommodate a lot of people's needs on that end, so that's really good. And then within the city, it'll help facilitate with SharePoint and Microsoft 365 better efficiency in communication, better efficiency in collecting data and accessing data, so that's really nice. Also, I did get a second email about a woman at Cambridge Commons, and she mentioned a speed limit sign because it is getting pretty high traffic over there, and I will forward that right over to you, Mark, and see if there's anything we can do in that area. That'd be great. I'm looking forward to a proclamation at the next council meeting. That would be very good for America Proud, and it'd be very awesome to see that month dedicated to that, for July. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so today is Flag Day, and you probably noticed all the flags and also the Lager Rodeo banners that are out. It's absolutely beautiful. If you haven't been downtown, please do take a stroll or drive through there. I want to thank the Public Works Department and Nathan in this department. They always make things look beautiful, the flowers, the flags, the banners. They're just an extraordinary team, so thank you to them. I too want to extend my thanks to Chamber Director Monique Brigham and her team. They did a beautiful job, a wonderful job. Blast from the past was extremely fun, well-attended, and the weather, of course, really helped. The weather was beautiful, and it was quite a celebration, and so it was really lovely. I want to make everybody aware that on Tuesday next week, the 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, we are going to be having our open house. It's an open house celebration for our wastewater treatment plant laboratory and operations building and public works building project. And that's at 401 and 501 Alexander Street. If you have any questions, you can give Julie Rosario a call, 360-855-9932. So I hope to see everybody there for that. I want to thank Councilwoman Diamond, Councilman Burns, and Councilman Lavaca for attending the North Star meeting last night. It was an informative meeting. I appreciated the feedback that I got from all of them, and I just am very grateful that they were there. This is going to be a very important project. It's going to be a multi-year project, so the support that we have and the information and sharing of information that we have is going to be vital. So thank you, my council members, for being there. And that is all I have tonight. We are going to move now into... We're going to move into the public hearing. No, that's coming. That's public comments. I'm a little lost tonight. I'm sorry, Mark. That was me. My bad. Public comments. So anybody who would like to give public comment, please come forward. Keep it to three minutes if you can, and please give your name and address. So I'll begin first with people in the chamber here. If there's anybody in the chamber who wants to give public comment. All right, seeing that, I will go to the online. Is there anyone online who would like to give public comment? Please just undo your mic. Okay. I don't see anybody who wants to give public comment. We will close that, and now, now we will move into the public hearing. So thank you, Mark, for being so patient. So the way that this is going to go, like it always has, counsel, is that first we'll have Mark do the presentation, and then we'll do the public testimony, public hearing testimony. Was there a sign-up sheet out there at all?
There is.
There is one? Okay.
Good evening, council. This is our presentation for the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program. We do this process yearly to provide our projects that will be submitted to the Council of Governments for inclusion in the statewide TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. There's a number of reasons we do this. It's required that our projects be in the TIP, approved TIP, to be qualified for state and federal funding. The projects must be on federally functionally classified streets. That's the arterial streets like West State Street, Highway 20, Metcalf, those, the major arterials. A public hearing is required, and that is what we're doing tonight. And these projects that are in the TIP are based on the 2016 update to the Comprehensive Plan, the 2017 Plan Amendments for Chapter 3, the transportation element, as it was adopted by council on May 9th of 2018. So Bill, would you go ahead and advance the slides? Okay, that's the items I just talked about, and then one more. The primary focus of the next six years will be funding and completing the critical transportation projects related to anticipated traffic growth over the next 20 years. The highlighted projects that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, the Jones-Johnliner Trail Road Corridor projects, and I'll have a slide to show you that in a moment. That consists of nine, previously eight, projects scheduled between 2021 and 2031. That's a little bit of an update from last year. We were anticipating through 2026. And again, all of these dates are based on funding availability. Within the individual projects themselves that you find in the TIP, the first priority is the SR 9 Township and Johnliner-McGargill Intersection Project, which we are currently designing for construction in 2024. That's the TIP-funded project at that intersection. The second priority is the SR 20 Cascade Trail West Extension, Phase 2A, sorry for the length of that. That runs from Holt Camp to Hodgins Road. That's been in design for over a year now. In-house, David Lee is designing that with the assistance of Wally Hoyt, and that's planned for construction in 2024. And as you know, we just turned the right-of-way folks loose to negotiate for the easements we need for that project. The third priority is the SR 20 Reed Street Intersection Improvements. There's a couple of those in the TIP. This particular one, some of you have actually commented to me on how difficult it is to get out that intersection. This will put basically a pork chop or a painted island, similar to what we did at Metcalf Street some years ago, and it'll be signed for right-in and right-out. It's a solution for that. It's fairly low cost. We'll design that in-house and build that in 2024. The fourth priority is for the next in our scheduled overlay projects. This one will be on North Reed Street. It'll go from Highway 20 to Johnliner Road. There'll be a project two on North Reed, which will apply for funding for a following year on that as well. The fifth priority is the Jones-Johnliner BNSF Railroad Undercrossing and Roadway Extension Project. That's a part of the corridor projects as well. And then the last one on the immediate priorities is Johnliner Road Reed to Township Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements Project. And by the way, just a little bit of good news. We applied for funding for a number of our high-priority projects through the Council of Governments in the last month, and we did the project selection as the Technical Advisory Committee two weeks ago, and those will be going now to the Policy Board for approval, but all of the projects that we submitted were selected were for funding, including the sister project for the Bicycle Ped Project on Johnliner, which is the rest of the roadway improvements. And so the good news is, is those projects are at least partially funded, and you'll be seeing more on that later, but I just wanted to mention that. So the secondary focus of the next six years is maintenance of our existing, thank you, Bill, our existing arterial streets via our overlay program. We typically budget $100,000 from our transportation benefit district funds that's paid for by card tabs for that program. We do a combination of things. We try to do small projects when we can, but generally, we've applied for a Transportation Improvement Board overlay project, and we've been quite successful the last few years with getting those. We did Trail Road last year, and this year we're doing Cook Road, and that'll be going out to bid. In fact, you'll see that on the 28th council meeting. There'll be the request for approval to advertise that project for bids. The third focus is on updating our ADA ramps and sidewalks citywide in conformance with the American Disabilities Act. We have a $500,000 TIP Complete Streets grant that we received last year that we... that we spend over three years, and then we're eligible to apply for it again. We'll be using those funds to further this goal of updating our ramps in accordance with our ADA transition plan, which we adopted two years ago. The project that we did this year is we worked with Gadget County at the mayor's, mayor's request to put in a pedestrian crossing on Cook Road to the new, or the Patrick Janneke Playground area and the sports fields out there, and that project's complete and in use, as you've no doubt noticed. The county designed that and bid and had it constructed, and we paid about a third of the cost of the project with our TIP funds. So it's a good use of those funds. Next slide, Bill. Okay. Before I get into talking about the pictures here, I, I added a slide, but I wasn't able to get it in time just to talk a little bit more about funding for these projects. We basically have two different kinds of streets. I mentioned the arterial streets, and we have funding that we generally secure through grant sources like the Transportation Improvement Board, the Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds through SCOG, which I just mentioned we were awarded, will be awarded some of those, and then other grant programs as they come up, like the, the Raze application that we have pending. You should hear by the end of the month on that for all of the corridor projects. We use local funds to match those. It varies with the program. The federal funds require a 13.5% local match. TIP requires 15% at our level, and it, and other programs vary. The Raze program, it was a 20% match to do that. So we juggle around quite a bit to come up with local funds to match the programs. In particular, we use GMA Transportation Impact Fee Funds. They vary every year depending on the amount of development that's going on. They were pretty healthy the last couple of years. We budgeted $61,000 for this year, and we'll probably exceed that, but that's one source. That's eligible for any expansion-type projects that, that we do in the city that, that support growth and development. We use a portion of the real estate excise tax funds for both our arterial streets and our local access streets. We budget about $150,000 for local access streets, which supports our, our chip seals and crack seals and our overlay program. And then another $600,000 or so goes into the arterial program, generally speaking, to provide match for the larger grants that we get. And then the, the final main source we have is our Transportation Benefit District, which I've already mentioned tonight. That brings in about $200,000, $210,000 in an average year for use on our transportation system. We use a portion of that for our arterial overlays and those kind of things. So anyway, just a little note on funding. So this particular slide is of the Jones John Liner Trail Road Corridor Project, which, this is Cook Road. This is Highway 20 coming through town east to west. FNS Grade Road, and then Jones Road, which goes from FNS Grade Road eastward to where it's blocked by the BNSF Sumas Railway Line, which is about 22 feet in the air at that point. And then on the other side, we have our arterial system starting at Reed Street on John Liner Road, which goes to Highway 9. One of the key parts of this project is connecting those two roads and creating a new east-west arterial. That is the Jones John Liner BNSF Undercrossing Project that I mentioned as one of our priorities earlier. As you know, we've already contracted with BNSF to design that bridge and to drive the piles for it, and we have the bridge pier caps and the bridge girders are already in stockpile waiting for us to secure funding for the rest of that project. That's a pretty big project. It's estimated at about $12 million at this point. It is included in that Raze grant application I mentioned earlier. Also in that list of projects, the, the other key elements that we didn't have right-of-way for were the sections to extend Trail Road from, from Cook on up to Jones Road. This section in red was built for us by BYK as a part of their development of the Garden Meadow subdivision. That's complete and, and it's in use now. The next section is a piece of unopened land that we just finished acquiring from the Tuttle family. So that's in, in our hands now. The next segment that's in red is through the Bucko property, and we have a developers' agreement that you've been closely involved with us. We've negotiated that, and they will be donating the right-of-way for that and, and building that road over the course of the next couple of years. They've completed Phase 1 of their project pretty much, and they're now building the demonstration houses for that, which runs a new city street in from FNS that will tie into the future arterial. And they've constructed a hammerhead here that's the beginning of that roadway. As, as that project continues, their phases 2 and 3 are south of Brickyard Creek. They'll be completing that roadway all the way down to Cook Road. And then the other critical piece of right-of-way, which is in hand now, is the former Nelson property that we have also secured. That will connect through that to, to Cook Road. We're anticipating also, as a part of the corridor, reconstructing the intersection of Trail and Cook at this location. And all of those projects I just mentioned are included in that Raze application, which we'll hear about by the end of June. So a big focus for our TIP for the next few years. Next slide, Bill. So this one's a little harder to read, but it's, it's a page from our project description we've been keeping updated for the corridor projects. The blue ones are projects that are completed. I mentioned in here the right-of-way acquisition and all those other things, and, and that's a little hard to read, but the total for all of those projects is 40-some million dollars, and we have already committed or have purchased right-of-way up of about 10 million. So we are, we're still looking to fund about $29 million in projects. Next slide, please. This pro, this particular slide just shows the projects from the TIP that are included, that are on the state system. As you can see, there's quite a few marked as complete. We've been making quite a bit of progress since the last Comprehensive Plan was prepared in 2017, and we're continuing to chip away at those. I should mention that one of our follow-on projects that's listed on here is an extension of our Cascade Trail, which is a shared-use path on the north side of Highway 20, from Collins Road to, I mean, excuse me, from Holt, Hospital Road to Holt Camp Road. That's the next section. That was part of the projects that were funded by SCOG. So we'll be designing that one over the next couple of years and building that probably around 2025. And of course, we're building right now the one that is from Holt Camp to Hodgins Road. That's under design for construction next year. All right, the next slide that Bill has put up is the other city streets that are arterials. And again, there's quite a few completes on here. We've been updating the slide from the 2017, 2016 plan. So we've made quite a bit of progress over the last few years, and we're continuing to apply for funding to complete the others within this group. Again, the concentration is on the Jones John Liner Corridor, which is also included in these projects. Next slide. This one is just a combination of those two sets of projects, the state projects with the local ones. These are all projects that are eligible for our impact fee funding that we collect that I mentioned earlier. Next slide. So changes from the 23 to 2028 TIP to the 2024 to 2029. I've shown the two completed projects, which is the SR20, SR9 Township Intersection Projects. That one was functionally complete in January, December, and it's finally complete. All the punch list items were completed last week, and we're in the closeout on that project. And as I mentioned before, we have an overlay plan for Cook Road for, from Ferry Street roundabout all the way out to the city limits. That's ready to go to ad as soon as you approve that ad, coming up on the 28th of this month. So additions and deletions. I won't go through all these in detail with you. We have, generally, when we do these tips, we will move projects around as funding has been secured for them, or we need to update estimates and those kind of things. And so there are several projects that have been added to the TIP as a result of that. Next slide, please. And I just mentioned here, there's a few projects that have moved around for scheduling purposes. The John Liner Road Reed to Township Bicycle Ped Project was originally scheduled for construction in 2024. A part of that funding I mentioned earlier from the Council of Governments is the funding for the arterial improvements on John Liner. We're looking to link those two designs and those two projects together and build those in 2026. Other revisions, as I mentioned, engineers' estimates, updates, and things like that. There, just a comparison of year to year. In the previous TIP, there were 14 projects. There's now 19 in the current version of that. Next slide, please. So we also prepare, just for illustrative purposes, a, a portion of the TIP from, for the next 14 years. The previous one was from 2029 to 2045. That moves to 2030 to 2046. So the changes here are just to add another overlay project in the 2046 window. And there's an arterial project that we've been planning and discussing with the school district for some time that we've added to the TIP itself for Fourth Street to be updated from, from its local access status to a arterial. And the, that's a desire of the school district to do that so that the section of Third Street, which is an arterial right now that runs through the middle of the high school, can be either closed or limited in its, its traffic volume during the peak times of the day. So that's now on the, the longer-range TIP. And again, we've adjusted the projects to reflect inflation for estimates and those kind of things. That part of the TIP, there were 36 projects before. There's now 39. Okay. So the next slides are, are, I'm not going to go through, through those with you because we've already talked about the particular projects. And in fact, that is all I need to see, say about the TIP. So no action is requested tonight. This is your public hearing and your first reading, so. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Perfect. Other questions for Mark? Go ahead, Councilwoman Lavaca.
Sure, if we do public first. Thank you very much for explaining all that and doing all that hard work. I just had a question on C7 for the artillery going through up by Railroad and Jameson. Is the county able to do, I know it's more county up at the Minkler, but there was another wreck up there recently, people trying to get onto Minkler from 20. Are they aware of the, the risk up there and the, the need to have that a little bit more safer and, and better accessed?
Well, you know, this was mentioned to me recently. It may have been by you, Councilmember Lavaca, that was a high-accident intersection. I haven't had a chance to talk to the county road department yet, but I do plan to do that just to make sure they're working it on their end. One of the things, another thing we do in the transportation world is we update our, our traffic counts every year. And I just got the counts from January and February for the city. That's when they generally do those for us. And most of the traffic counts didn't really change much, not, not anything of real surprise, other than Highway 20 is showing another about 1,000 vehicles a day. It does vary a bit year to year, and it depends on, you know, the weather of the day you count and all the rest of that. So that one's probably not that indicative. But I did notice that Jones Road's gone up another click or so over what it has been, and it's been steadily increased. Did I say Jones? I meant Jameson. Has been, has been increasing over the last number of years since we put that roundabout in, in down there. In fact, one of the members of the public contacted me about that. They, they saw in the longer-range part of the TIP, a project downstream, which is quite a ways down. It's not in our funded part or our sixth year, that calls for an upgrade to Jameson Street, which has been in the TIP for years, which would make it into a three-lane section and, and provide improvements there. They were concerned about that because of the neighborhood impact. I did assure them that there's nothing happening in the short term, and by the time it becomes a problem such that it does need to be built, folks are likely going to be demanding that we do something. It's kind of the way that works in the transportation world. So, but that is in the longer-range TIP.
And then I have one more question. So with the construction and job opportunities that are happening east on 20, and I believe there was an open house that some people maybe have attended up in the B10 complex of Janneke, that's going to bring in traffic a certain amount of time, dates and times, plus increased business up in that area and increased housing. Do we feel that 20 can handle that up until Jones and John Liner is ready? And then at that, will Jones and John Liner suffice for the increase? I believe that is possibly one of more buildings to go up that way outside of the city, but it is the only access in and out.
Right. Yeah, we've, we've been tracking that, and we don't really calculate particular development pods outside of the city. We look at things closely here, like the Swift Center and, and, which has changed somewhat in its, in its complexion. But the, the background growth on Highway 20, we do have a fair amount of that built into our model. Whether we have enough, I don't know yet, but we are, are watching that pretty closely. The Jones John Liner Corridor will take somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,000 vehicles a day off of Highway 20 the year it opens, and its capacity is, is, they're, they're estimating that it will, within the 20-year window that we did the traffic modeling on, would carry 7,000 to 8,000 vehicles a day, which reduces the pressure both on Highway 20 and on Jameson and on West State by those amounts as well. So it does, Jones John Liner, the reason that's so critical for the city is, is it does allow us to handle the traffic growth that, that's projected for Cedar Woolley and Environments for the next 20 years. That answers your question.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. Now, now whether their growth up there is going to cause congestion before that, I, I really don't have a way of predicting that, but I, I will say it's pretty important that we continue to move ahead with that project and get that done as quickly as we can. That's why we're kind of, every opportunity we have to apply for funds to meet those priorities that I mentioned earlier on the TIP, we want to keep doing that.
So I would imagine that there's communication between the cities, Lima and Hamilton Concrete on their comp plan as well as business opportunities and development that's taking place. It, it would be pretty easy to predict, you know, 500 cars set on that road in that section two times a day at certain points or three or four times a day. If there's a large, a mechanic shop, you know, three or four extra people, maybe a small store with maybe 20 people, but when you have a business setting up for 400 or 500 people, that, this, you know, it would be something to, to think about going forward.
Yeah, the Council of Governments does keep track of all of those things. It's a good thing, you know, to, to comment on and to keep an eye on. But yes, we do expect there's going to be a significant amount of growth in traffic because of the new projects.
Okay, anyone else? So following or being in line with the public hearing, I am going to open this up to the public. I did not have anybody sign up to speak tonight, but I am going to open it up for anyone who would like to give public comment or testimony to the transportation projects. So anyone? All right. So as Mark said, this is a first read, so this will be coming back to us. Mark, I just want to thank you for the hard work that you do. You do extraordinary work, and we have some really great projects because of you and your team. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, I'm going to open it up to you, Charlie. It looks like we're looking at an EVCS site host.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Both Mark and I had an opportunity to meet with a consulting firm known as Cyan Strategies recently, recently, and they are working on a statewide grant proposal to WashDOT that would fund along the corridors of the state highways, a whole system of electric vehicle charging stations. They have a private sector partner that they are working with, which is known as EV Charging Solutions. And these would be charging stations where folks would be charged for the power they'd use, but the city would receive actually a portion of that back. So the city would actually receive a revenue stream from allowing some of our right-of-way to be used for charging stations. There's no capital cost to the city whatsoever for this. It's a fully grant-funded project. It's a 10-year agreement that we would be eventually entering into should there be funding secured through the grant. This is the first of a series of grants. There's a lot of electric vehicle charging money that's becoming available. So for the city, it's really no cost, added tourism. We've picked a site, we're recommending a site, that is located on MedCaf, and it's between northern and eastern. So it's essentially where the Cascade Trail hits MedCaf, and it's the east side of MedCaf. There was a map that I included in the packet, it's the last page, and I just circled, there are seven parking spaces there. They need about seven to eight to do four charging stations.
Just a couple blocks up this way.
Yes, and the reason for that location, one, it has to be within one mile of the state highways. So it's within one mile, and the second is it's close to downtown. So the goal would be people would come, they would park, they would take however long they take to charge up, hopefully stay even longer, and visit downtown while they're doing that. So it's an opportunity to draw some folks in. It is time, this particular opportunity is time limited. The grant is due on the 28th of June, and so the request we have from Cyan Strategies is to sign a letter of intent with EVCS, which basically says we're interested in this concept, and we would be willing to make those seven parking spaces available. There are no businesses located on either end of that, so we're not impacting anybody's direct parking. And so that's the request, and then that letter of intent would lead us to signing the actual site host agreement if the funding was secured. So that's the request of council, and my apologies, one, we didn't get this in the initial packet, so it came on Monday, so my apologies for that. And two, we really would like action tonight to stay on the timeline, because otherwise we don't have a meeting until the 28th, and it's basically when this thing is due.
Okay, questions? Any questions?
If I may, Charlie. On that, since there's, I think it's definitely a wise idea to do, it's, especially with the charging station right at the foot of the trail and foot of town, we're going to draw on some people for sure. Are we capable of doing two of those since we're on nine and 20, or is that just available for one, or is that something that has been discussed going forward?
They love this particular site because it services both nine and 20, right? Because they're within a mile of both of those highways where they run jointly. But we did talk about some other site possibilities, and there will be more rounds of grant funding. So I see an opportunity to expand the system over time and working with these folks, depending upon what the grant opportunities are and what the criteria are.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. I just wanted to make sure was the, were the businesses that were closest to the site okay and involved in this as well for overflow from their parking, or just if they were involved in this at all?
Yeah, this came up quickly, so we have not had a chance to reach out to those businesses. But we tried to pick a site that wasn't close to any businesses, and that was the recommendation of Cyan Strategies overall from their experiences. That's the last thing we, any of us want to do is directly impact the businesses we're trying to help.
If I may, if we can, put a motion forward for the EVCS site host agreement for director, for direct fast charging stations for electronic vehicles.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, and it does authorize me to sign a letter of intent to eventually enter into a 10-year site host agreement with the EV Charging Solutions, EVCS, for charging stations to be located on the east side of Metcalf between Northern Avenue and Eastern Avenue. While this is the first read, staffing has recommended that you do do this right away, and you have, thank you very much. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Excellent, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a second item, which is the Fire Department Levy-Lid Lift. And Kelly, we're going to turn this over to you.
Kelly and I agree that I would just lead off, and then Kelly and Frank will fill in. So council, just looking at the calendar, I believe it was about a year ago that we had a committee meeting, Public Safety Committee, where we started talking about this. So we've had a long extended process of kind of vetting this concept, and what you have before you tonight is a result of your last meeting where we had a motion and the council supported it to move to an eight firefighter EMT Levy-Lid Lift to remove the community paramedic and professional, and to separate the fire department radio need and fund that with ARPA funding, which you've now done as well. So that's really where we are, and I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to cover the ballot language, and then Frank's there as well to cover any needs-related questions.
So the resolution, the first page includes our current property tax. It's just over $1.80 per thousand dollars of value. At the bottom of the first page of the resolution, you'll see we have a proposed increase of just over 81 cents per thousand dollars of estimated value, making it go up to, and again, this is an estimate, $2.62 per thousand dollars of value. On page two of the resolution is the ballot language that would be included in there, which basically summarizes some of those numbers I just presented, and would fund fire and emergency service, including additional firefighter EMTs. So that's the summary of the resolution and the ballot language that's included in the resolution. We've also attached just some financial fact sheets, a quick rundown of the levy rate, how the increase in property tax would impact the levy rate to our best estimates, and gave some breakdowns of estimates to homeowners of varying levels, and a couple of businesses, varying levels of those businesses, and then a summary of what the actual, actual costs are. And I'll turn it over to Frank if he has anything to add.
I just want to thank all of you for putting up with this for the last year and working with us and allowing us to put this forward to the voters. I know it's a big ask and a big need, but we do appreciate your time and discussion and support.
Are there any questions? Even though this is the first read, they are looking for a approval of this item tonight. So, Councilman Burns?
My only question was in regards to the proposition section that'll actually go in the voter's pamphlet. The part here that says to improve response times, are we allowed to elaborate any more than that on why we're doing this, or is that what we're limited to?
I might defer to the city attorney on that one, actually.
Okay.
So in my, we should be careful about what we put in there, because we don't want to overpromise. If we put something in there that is entirely attainable, for whatever reason, we don't want that to come back on us. And so we've had a lot of back and forth about the language, and the recommendation is to leave it the way it is currently drafted.
Okay, well, just wanted to check, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that I've heard a lot of feedback on this, and there's a lot of support for the need for firefighters have been, you know, for a city like ours, and we've relied on the volunteers, so people do understand that. You know, it was good that you guys put the 17 to 30 for single-family, and then 48 for upper-value homes, and that's going to be, you know, above 700,000. So some people were, you know, curious about that and had questions about that, so it'd be interesting to see how it goes through, for sure. But I am glad we're putting it before the voters, and I remember the first meeting that we had when this was discussed, and originally it was for firefighters, and the need was obviously timed to refine that, I guess. So, thank you.
If there's, go ahead. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the Fire Department Levy-Lid Lift, and ballot measure, Resolution 1121-23.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen, to approve ballot measure language resolution 1121-23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to the agreement for approval, Reichart and EB Engineering, it's the Design Phase Services for the John Lainer Road Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements Project. Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you, Mayor. I touched on this earlier, but this is a design phase agreement to do the engineering design for the John Lainer Road Bicycle Pedestrian Improvements Project, in the amount not to exceed $259,920. A couple of comments on this. One thing that became clear to us as we were moving forward with negotiating this agreement and authorizing the funds for it from the Council of Governments, who provided additional funding for this project through the gap strategy that I have mentioned to you a few weeks ago. This is a, this is a high price for design for a trail by itself. However, what we've found is that because of the narrow right-of-way we have on John Lainer Road, it does not appear possible to build this trail apart from building the curb and gutter that will be a part of the street project that is not funded by this project. So in working through this whole process, it became obvious that we really just need to build the whole road. So that was the reason we went to the Council of Governments and requested funding for the arterial project itself, which I mentioned before, has, will be going to the Policy Board for approval. And what this contract does include in it is most of the geometric design for the sidewalk as well as the rest of the road. We had to do that in order to figure out how to place it properly. The original concept, when we applied for this grant in 2019, was that we would have a three-foot buffer between the trail and the curb. It's just not physically possible with the limitations we have on the roadway. So it's worked out for, to us, to usly for us to have the additional design phase money to put into this, and it's a really rather minor increase in our local cost to design what will essentially give us the start point for the design for the full project. It's my intention to go to the Council of Governments after the award is confirmed for the arterial, to request early obligation of the design phase funds for the roadway itself, so that we can design them both at the same time and bring the whole thing to 100% design sometime around the first part of 2024. There's some right-of-way to acquire as a part of this. We have half of that allowance is in this particular contract, the other half will be in the arterial project. Makes the most sense to do all of that at one time. And so that's the way we're approaching this, and we have the funds to award this particular contract with a combination of the original grant and then the gap funds that we have taken on since. So it's my recommendation that you move to authorize Mayor Johnson to sign this professional service agreement, number 2023 PSO3, with Reichart and EB Engineering of Linden, Washington, for the design phase services for the John Lainer Road Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Projects, in the amount not to exceed $259,920.87.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Madam Mayor, if I may, on that, would there be something that would also include the concept drawings for possibly pamphlets to mail up and down that John Lainer corridor, just so that the neighborhood kind of sees?
Yeah, actually, the same thing that we did for the roundabout project, we prepare a letter, we have our right-of-way agent do that, and then we mail that to everybody so they'll know that, they all should be aware it's coming already. We've been talking about this project for several years now. It's been in our public meetings and our discussions in the newspaper and all the rest of that. But we will specifically target those that will need easements, well, basically it will affect everybody along the street, and they will get a notice. It'll be one of our early intentions to get a letter out to the folks fairly quickly, like in the first three to four months of the project.
Yeah, I think that just some concept drawing so they see what's coming, rather than kind of hearing something. They also see that those with the sidewalks look like, with the trees, with the bicycle access, kind of, you can vision it down on McGargill side, but to be able to kind of see that, hey, this is what we're aiming for. I think might excite some people, and then it might give some people some knowledge. Awesome, thanks.
And you're exactly right. It will look very much like McGargill, although we do anticipate a concrete path rather than asphalt. And again, because of the right-of-way narrowness, we won't have a grass strip between the path and the curb, so.
All right. No other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Kesty, to move forward with the phase services, project not to exceed $259,920.87. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the last item under new business is the amending of the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 9A, Point 210, offenses involving drug and controlled substances, ordinance number 2049-23. And, good evening, Nikki, I believe you have this?
I do. So I probably could have put this on the consent agenda, however, on the off-chance that anyone had any questions, I thought we would put it on new business. This is the ordinance that brings in the revised Code of Washington, recent amendments to address the Blake case. This does create a simple drug possession crime of gross misdemeanor for knowing possession or knowing use of a controlled substance. This is to address hard drugs such as fentanyl, such as cocaine, meth, heroin, and the like. It also creates a pre-trial diversion process. However, I'm not going to talk much about that, because I think the general is that it does have some kinks to be worked out, and we're probably going to be seeing some changes in that regard over the next few sessions. This ordinance also preempts the drug paraphernalia world, so that only the state gets to decide what is and is not criminal when it comes to drug paraphernalia. So this ordinance, it amends Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 9A210 to bring in RCW 6950 4013. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I'd love action this evening, as there are portions that come into effect on July 1st.
Any questions for Nikki?
Madam Mayor, more of a statement, and thank you, Nikki, for working on this, and thank you guys for taking this seriously. I have not spoken to one person out in the community that wants to see drugs legal in this area. And it's sad that we have to have legislative bodies in Olympia that are moving forward with this kind of stuff, and I'm glad that we can at least have some combat against it. So just from the community I've spoke with, I wanted to express a thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Put a motion forward for amending the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Chapter 9A, Dot 210, offenses involving drug and controlled substances.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, as stated by Councilman Lavaca. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, so that does complete our new business. Just wanted to pull or bring to your attention the information that we have with the Fire Department monthly data. If you haven't seen that, be sure to take a look at that, it's good data. Now we will move into executive session. We're going to discuss qualifications of applicants for public employment. We're going to discuss qualifications of applicants for public employment under RCW And we will be back in... How long do you think we need here?
Fifteen minutes.
We'll be back in fifteen minutes. Thank you. So is there going to be a breakout room?
So it's... There's seven stalls on Metcalf Street right there. And they're...
Right on the street.
Yeah. And that's where they want to put it. Is that a good idea? Is that a bad idea? I don't know.
You need some charging stations around here, but... It's private business. City's going to be getting taxed on it. And there are already taxes for... Have an electric car? Really have huge taxes? And now you're going to...
Massive taxes.
Now you're going to be taxing business for...
So what they're going to be getting revenue stream is the... So this company wants to kind of... And they want to set up... They want to do site prep. They want to set up for... To do the charging station. Seven stalls.
Yep.
Okay. Now whoever has the electric vehicle has to pay to charge their car. Their car there. The city gets a portion of that payment that they're paying for the car. And then the company gets stressed. So they could make a killing off it, or... There's a free charging station here in town that nobody ever uses.
No, there wasn't.
And it sits there. Nobody uses it.
What was that?
You know where the new apartment is over there by Woodslog Inn? The downtown 48?
Yeah. They're somewhere in there.
Yeah, so there's...
That's BYK with that in it. They get money or what?
Nobody gets money.
It's free. But it's BYK's property.
Let's see who owns that, actually. I don't know whose property it is. I don't think BYK owns it. I think BYK built this. But I think they had a chance to use up that one or two. This is why they're challenged.
Because I never knew anything else was older than BYK's and railroad right-of-way.
Okay, so... Okay, yeah, they might not have...
So they would be getting... Why can't somebody has property? Oh, I want to put it on my property. At least this...
Oh, I'm sure they could. I'm sure they could if they had... But I personally wouldn't want to buy it because I don't think I'd make enough money off it to work on this. Yeah, so who pays the electric bill for the free station? I'm not sure.
The company that puts them in.
Well, all the free ones that we have right now.
I didn't know they were free.
Yeah, they're free. You just plug into them. But that apartment...
So you have to pay for them?
Those are totally free?
Advertise it?
No, they don't. They don't advertise it at all. But the apartment building, the entire roof, it's all solar panels. So I'm sure they get some kind of a takeback from PSC for that.
I told my buddy to buy that property. He gave him... Paid like $126,000 for that two acres. Seja Woolley for the library property is and all that. Tear everything out and clean it up and make a bill. It was $1,400,000. It's like not even an acre. It's just ridiculous. And he spent $12 million on whatever.
Yeah, there's a... Well, you know, they're building a apartment building where the formula shop is.
That hasn't been sold yet, has it? I know BYK and Janice wants it. I think it's BYK really trying to get it. It's like, who wants it there? I don't. I own the property next to it. I'm the guy fighting the city on that road they go through.
Which one?
Eastern Avenue. You go through the library property line, you see that white line there. That's railroad right-of-way. They have no documents to say they have the right to go through that railroad right-of-way to that. The city just did it. And then that railroad strip there? That was a private site. It was not ever granted to the city. It's right there on the placemat. Yes, Avenue's not granted, dedicated to the city. And they totally ignore it. They arrested me. I've been in jail overnight over it. They destroyed my property out there. I had to buy ramps to put in there so I could just get my motorhome.
Which one's your property?
It's 101 West Woodworth. Right there on the corner of Woodworth and Eastern Avenue. That was never granted to it. The only piece that hasn't been dealt with, all the rest of it was given to the partners next to it. My neighbor, because his building was on the library property, made a plea deal with him and said, yeah, I agree that that's your property. Just leave my building on your property that's two feet. He made a deal. Me, I'm saying, hell no. It was never yours. And then you have the chief here turning out my no trespassing signs when there's a court battle going on. Property issue. He has no jurisdiction to do that. Anyway, this is the kind of thing you will be dealing with if you run into one. Yes, it is. I mean... If somebody says it's theirs and makes it theirs? No, here's the label. Yeah. There's the... On every title, every deed, and the title will... It says, go to page 92. Gives you the page I want to go to. That's the Bible of where the roads come from.
Yeah.
And the city thinks they own the land. They only have easement on many roads on the planet.
Yeah.
And they tell you not my no trespassing signs four times.
So are you right on the backside of that big commercial building that has the arcade in it?
I'm not that house next to it. Green grass. Little house there, it's 30 foot wide. It's all shrubbed. It's on mine. On the green grass there with a big yellow sign. Kind of used to have platform with all the laws and everything on it. Now they're suing me for quite a total. Meaning they've never owned it, and everything they did to me was illegal, unconstitutional. Everything. You go out, sit on a chair in your property, on your gravel that you put in there, you're under arrest, handcuffed you. All you... At 7:30 in the morning, haul you down there, and you spend the whole day down there, and you'd have to get home at 2:30 the next day. Thumb is still numb from the handcuffs. And the guy goes, that was pretty tight. Yeah, it was. Hold the lady, they're tight. Nope, don't make an example of me. And then a friend tried to bail me out. Nope, you can't bail them out. You'll lose that money. That's what they told me. He called twice. He asked them twice about that. That's how corrupt the sickness is around here. Hey, you want a bicycle trail? Pay for it. Because they're trying to push the... What they're trying to do is steal that property from railroad right-of-way by mowing it and everything. They've been brush cutting and everything. That's what I was telling you. They're trying to steal that by saying, well, we've taken care of this for this many years. I'm sorry, the railroad doesn't own it. It's an easement. It refers to the original owner or the property owner next to it. And they're trying to steal it from me. And everybody else owns it. Railroad doesn't have the right to sell what they don't own. And they cannot sell an easement. It's for railroad purposes only. Right on the deed. They're crooked. Big Lake, all those people got their property from railroad. So they're late too. I asked Public Records, how much money have you spent mowing all this property? No records. The records of the engineering designing for that road that they're referring, no records. Nope, there isn't. Well, they have a statement. Two people. Will Honey said they had an apartment that had been used and they have it now outlying. And that's a new one. Will Honey is a prosecutor in terms of the county. Who the city hired to just write this letter and deal with the neighborhood of the railroad or library. Oh, they paid them. It's theirs. So the library can go through there. I'm sorry, the library companion. You talk about that they're supposed to put in ballots, all the ballots. Keep it from running through. No, they paid it. Forced people through and it's exit only. It's like, are you kidding me? They take out my sign, they say, well, people are confused. Well, they come up here this way, and it's exit only. They're confused. Just a bunch of bullshit. This is the kind of stuff you'll be dealing with. I get a little hard-headed about this. Both have been done this. Code enforcement. Code enforcement came at me over there, threatened to tow off my staff and everything. I had a court case with them. I'm sorry, this is a land issue. And you use code enforcement? You can't do that. And this record over here is... And I said, this is a land issue. Who owns this land? Nope, I can do this. I'm sorry, Superior Court is the only one that can do that. Look it up in the Constitution. I have everything. I've got boxes and boxes and boxes of evidence. I just got to get it into court. You have to read the placemat. That's what the city needs. The easements are rights of any owners. That's the Bible. Look, you can Google it, and it'll show the actual satellite map picture of that.
So that's an exit that goes all the way to Woodworth.
Close to Woodworth, then off to Reva. And they have spray-in parking. So you're backing out no matter which way. So you can go back out the way you came in. Except they made that entranceway so damn narrow. Ridiculous. And it was never supposed to go up there. It was supposed to go to State Street where the original plans. And they changed it all without a public comment. When they bought Ironskill, it's like they're doing now. They went in there, came out, bought Ironskill. No public comment. The library got expanded. They changed everything. Be it so.
I'm not particularly a fan of how they built a new library.
Nobody wanted it.
Nobody wanted it.
245 people answered, there's a survey of about 26,000. And they go, a library? Oh, it's going to read my life downtown? Jeez, what a joke.
Well, and they built a new library, and they have an old one that was doing just fine.
They could have added one to the south.
Nobody really uses libraries, I think, where I've noticed.
Same people. Same people over and over. Just like the walking trails and bike trails, pretty much same people.
Well, I work at the city in the city of Manhattan. You know, ones to use people come to the library.
It's not packed for hundreds of kilometers.
It's mostly homeless. They're going there and it's all day. But...
Especially when it's hot or cold. Nope. So if you happen to do that there, you're not hurting nothing.
One of the things that they do in Berlin, they have those huge meeting rooms in the new library.
Yep. Ours, I've been in a few meetings there.
Our old library?
Counsel will be in executive session for an additional 10 minutes.
They have kids coming in there screaming, yelling, playing, and the parents don't even tell them to quiet down. Then they have sewing going on, and they want to make a kitchen in there and have cooking classes. Oh, that's not a freaking library. That's the community center. Go there. You have big, huge buildings at hand. Or the seniors' center. Or use the old library for that.
Yeah, true. But also, they could have, so like, as... And like, for example, again, as the city grows and expands, they build a new city hall. Because the old city hall used to be over on Fairhaven, and it was the Fire Department, Police Department, the library, it was everything.
Right.
And then, so, you know, the city gets bigger and you expand. And so now that old building is being used by the Parks Department through their offices and stuff. And it's also actually being used by the Fire Department right now, too, because they're doing renovation of the fire hall. But one of the things about that was that the old library, you know, building's not good enough to use anymore, so they leased it out to the YMCA for a dollar a month, or a dollar a year.
Dollar. It has a basement to it. Told the mayor, I said, well, what's the kids downstairs? Because they come in, they're right there in front of the computer room, beaten, and they come in, beat on the keyboards and stuff, screaming and yelling. It's like, put them downstairs. We can put it in an elevator. Yeah? It's not $12 million.
Well, it could have been used to house another department of the city.
They want to do Parks Department there.
Yeah, which they should have.
But there's not that many people, Parks Department, Street Department, it all is pretty much the same.
Yeah. Structurally, people do things sometimes that I don't, I don't really much care.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I don't know about the YMCA, how many kids are there?
I honestly don't know.
They make it sound like there's a lot, and that's like, nah.
Well, they, they make it sound like, uh, but, again, it could be like, you know, maybe there's hardly any, or
Yeah.
A lot of times, a lot of money gets dumped into that programs.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's the YMCA, it's some money, and, well, we, we gave fifty thousand dollars to the YMCA, and I was like, city, you'll, and the other cities followed. Well, you could go somewhere, really, you, you still advertising that? One day a week, for an hour or something like that, or a month, something like that, it's like, really?
Yeah.
Well, people, you're gonna save lives, they said, well, you wanna save lives? See the holy, just own the park there in Cleveland. House County, right? They have no lifeguard.
Oh, the beach?
Yep. No lifeguard, no life rings, no, no, no reports, no nothing to go, they're trying to save somebody, there's nothing there. Like fifty thousand, you could go there, up in, down there, and watch kids shit the old clar out half, halfway out there, chase them, ball that the wind got hold. And they never catch it, and then they turn around, they're halfway out. It's, it's scary watching them do that.
Yeah, but, the city doesn't need to throw funds for something that's outside of the city, and, and whether it be, or glitter leg or whatever.
Yeah, it was, it was there, well, that's the county library. City owns the property, that's county library.
Well, it's central scheduled, um, so it's for like the people upriver and stuff, but if you're like
In school district.
If, yeah, in the school district, but if you have like a Burlington address, you can't get a library prepared for it.
So you go in there and get, what, they never ask for them.
Well, to take stuff, you have to add one, but, so
You do a Burlington, say, hey, they have a therapy, they'll get it for you.
Yeah, they, they do some of that, too.
Their book collection, where you need to look, I should
Okay, it is seven thirty-nine, and we are back, um, and no, uh, decision was made. We have completed our meeting, and so I will close and adjourn this meeting. Thank you, have a good night.